The TV, the thirty seconds. To just kind of get started. I hear Jeff.
We're gonna have.
You're not, you're not a chipmunk.
Okay, yeah, I'm on Jen's computer. When I turned on the laptop, it decided I had to do a whole system update and said you can't touch it till it's done. So we're gonna switch when we have to, but we'll keep it going here if you got everybody.
Yep, we do. So I guess we'll get started then. I don't see the record going on yet, though.
HCTV. Can you guys confirm that you're ready to go?
Yeah, that little red record icon isn't showing up on my screen, but maybe it's going.
I don't see it.
Alright.
That's usually me who's actually recording, so alright.
Alright.
Okie dokie. Alright, so then we'll get started on our work session tonight. So we have a couple of topics to go over, and I know that there are a couple of things we had mentioned bringing up that maybe aren't quite on the agenda, and that's fine. The work session is flexible, so we wanted to get started by talking about the pool operations and the summer facilities and activities plan, just so that I know we had some folks join us on the meeting to kind of watch what was going on and hear about it. And so we'll get that update. If Jeff, do you wanna, since you're all set up, you wanna give the update that Cam has given?
Okay, yeah, so I sent some additional materials out to the board before the meeting, and so you'll have access to those. And Cam, I just came back from Todd Field just a few minutes ago, and Cam has a few things to finish up there, and he's gonna try to hop on because when he starts talking about the technical things related to the pool, it's better to get the correct terminology or to ask the questions to him, so he understands that he'll either be on to answer questions, or we can submit questions for specific answers. But just in general, the two documents that are included in Board Book for the work session is a summary of what's going on with summer facilities and programs that's based on anything from executive orders to guidance from MDE or MDH on what we can open. And then a separate document there focuses more specifically on what's happening with the summer programs, because they were obviously planning was put on hold, and then very late in the game, we got the go-ahead to try hybrid learning. And because our extended year programs were already committing to distance learning only to ensure equitable services for the students who were eligible, the secondary school, excuse me, the elementary schools are mirroring that, and they will do only targeted services programs that are distance learning. Same for the middle school, and then the high school will be doing credit recovery, which may include school visits if necessary, depending on what the credits are that the students are recovering. So in the facilities document, it talks about community ed, making facilities available for outdoor activities on June fifteenth, and then indoor activities on July sixth. So I'll just summarize kind of what I sent out about the pool, so that everybody tuning into the meeting can hear that. And then we'll leave it to questions or follow-ups that you need. And then just a note to the board. I sent a separate email just with an update, some extra information that was requested regarding end-of-the-year activities and what things look like potentially for next year. So that's a internal document for now until the board has a chance to absorb that. So I don't see Cam hopping on during that rain delay, so we'll jump right in. The history, as it's been explained to me, of the middle school pool was that a decision was made to go with this chlorination system that would save money, would operate better. And over the however many years it's been operating, that hasn't turned out to be true. Apparently, there's only like two places in the country that you can get service from, and so there was an issue in January. I sent kind of forwarded that communication to the board here earlier as well to show kind of where this this decision was based on the poor water quality here in January, and that the primary chlorination system was not working. So at this point, Cam, Rodney, and everybody involved with the operation of the pool are recommending that they basically abandon that primary chlorination system, that they switch over to a chlorination system, which is similar to the backup system, which is more old-fashioned technology. And I forwarded Cam's quote regarding the technology, and he can explain it better when he gets on. But it would, it would be like the system before the primary system came into place, and it was the backup system, and the backup system is what they've been running off of since January. They haven't got that primary system up and going. And the secondary system, the backup system operates at a much lower capacity, so it's not a long-term fix. So as they proceeded to draining the pool and doing their maintenance and whatnot, Cam is recommending that they switch to a redundant system where the primary system with a larger capacity is the same type of system, the same technology as the backup system. So they're, they mirror each other, but they just are operating in case one is malfunctioning. He believes that he can have, and at this point, he told me today, he's filled the pool, and they've begun the process of getting it up and ready. He believes that the earliest he would have some confidence that it'd be ready would be June thirtieth. In the facilities meeting that we have with activities and community ed, maybe two weeks ago now, looking at all the guidelines and executive orders and everything, and just assessing our staff. When we made the decision to begin indoor facilities use on June fifteenth, community ed facilities reservation could handle doing indoor reservations. They're being challenged by some retirements, positions that haven't been filled or may not be filled, and the fact that they got swapped out into emergency childcare. And then starting Monday, swap back into school-age care for the summer at a different site. So they've had a lot going on. They're processing those indoor reservations. They did not feel like they could handle that reservations any earlier than July sixth, so they could take them now, get the process so that people can participate in indoor facilities, including the pool, July sixth. So between Cam's recommendation, his confidence level is high, the pool can be safe, and within the water quality parameters that swimmers expect early July, Carrie Gore is recommending that they can handle the facilities reservations early July, and with the Fourth of July holiday, July third being a Friday, and then the Fourth being a Saturday, that the sixth would be the ideal target for everybody involved to open that up. So in a summary, that's where things are at. And once again, when Cam gets on, if you have technical questions about backing up what I just shared, then hopefully we can get those two in one way or another.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. So without Cam, are there any questions that you think can be addressed by Jeff, or are there questions for once Cam gets here? Anything about the plan?
My, my question, Kelsey, is actually not about the pool. It rolls back to some of those first questions that are points that Jeff brought up, which is around our credit recovery and targeted services in terms of the number of anticipated participants. I feel like maybe Matt Esterby put something in one of his notes, but it that addressed only our elementary school students. I wonder if we have a sense of the anticipated participation at the middle school and the high school level.
Okay, so I requested more information from Steve Kovac today. I think he's on vacation. He didn't reply today, so I could follow up and get a little bit more numbers on that. And then I believe Mike has a handle on the students that they're anticipating to work with on credit recovery. I saw something coming out at the end of June. He did not share specifics in his summary that he provided that you saw, but we can follow up on that, too. Because there's, there's two questions. One is, who should be doing credit recovery? And as they reach out to people, who's going to actually take advantage of it?
Yeah, I'd sure appreciate just a, just sort of an update email. Just so that I personally can understand the scale that what our, what our service is at. And maybe it's maybe a similar intermittent update with regard to our food service, especially if we anticipate requesting extension past the thirtieth of June.
Okay.
Nothing I need today, nothing I need today, just a sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
When, when Jen's on either today or on the twenty-fourth, she'll talk a little bit about how this June food service is running, because obviously you know it's a different model, and I did send just the, the information that was communicated out on that. Yeah, they've got some early results that are indicative of maybe what the future holds, but I'll see if she wants to talk about, if she's ready to talk about that tonight or not, and I actually printed out.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we're what? We're still in the first week. I'm not sure that two days gives us a very good, good sense of it. It's just a thing that I'd like to, as a board member, have a sense of scale going forward.
Okay, yep, and you're right. It's only been two, two pickup dates so far, and all I know so far is that people have reserved meals and not come to pick them up. Like, like.
Just a thing to watch.
So we gotta work through is that they really don't need the meals, or they're, we're making them available at the wrong sites, or what? Did you want to jump in on that? My camera's not on? Oh, I think it's you, okay. And then just quick on that, we'll update the numbers for you on middle school and high school. That's still obviously early, but while we were out at the graduation procession last Friday, Mike, actually, Paul had told me that there were, there were kids who were turning stuff in that morning so that they didn't have to go through credit recovery. So it was, that's how, how fast that's turning over. So probably this week would be a great time to get an update on who really didn't cross the finish line and needs to participate in credit recovery, and then some idea of who's actually gonna come in and do it, starting on the fifteenth. So I'll get updates on those for you. Still don't see Cam, so.
Just, just one question. I know folks may or, may or may not have had a chance to review the plan that, that was attached in Board Book from Haste, which I believe is based on guidance from USA Swimming. But just a couple of questions as we go through that. So in the document, it talks about kind of the flow into the building, into the pool, how temperatures will be checked, how sanitize, you know, hand sanitizers and such will be used, locker rooms closed, you know, wear your suit to the pool, wear your suit when you leave the building, et cetera. But just a couple of, couple of questions, and, and I don't know that we'll be able to answer them here, but if we could just document them and ask Cam. So the first one is, will, will the group be able to get into Hastings Middle School prior to the first day that it's open, presuming that that is July sixth? Will they be able to get in to do the work that they need to do to set up the markings outlined in that document for proper social distancing, both as folks enter the site and as they enter the pool and as they utilize the pool? So that's question, question one for Cam. I presume that that would be achievable. And then the second question is around the types of sanitizers and disinfectants that should be used between groups of swimmers, et cetera. You know, they're, they're using the hand sanitizers, et cetera, but I presume that there will still need to be a wipe down of areas that, you know, could be potential touch or high-touch areas. You know, whether that be a door handle, or, you know, whatever the case may be. So just some guidance as to, hey, this is what you should be using, or, you know, because I know that we have those items in the school. So just to make sure that, you know, that they are using the right items, so. And again, I'm not looking for answers here.
Alright, thanks. Yeah, I think it's good just to know kind of the questions going forward and making sure we're covering all of our bases and getting that all set up.
Yep, and then.
Because the swim team, the swim team is not the only one who will have these questions. This is really anyone who's doing facilities, so.
Yep, and then just one more, just one more topic here, and this goes to emergency response, so. In, will there, will there be items, I believe that they, that, that the recommendation is, is a certain, it's called a bag valve mask in the case of resuscitating somebody. Becky, you're, Becky Bysel, you're probably well-versed in this, but that may be something that that we need to have on-site as well.
Well, there's something with the filter now. It's if they're doing CPR or any breath, it's a high aerosol, and that's very risky. So they should really look into that and see what the best, because we, we use a filter on anything with aerosol, and we have filters in our rooms that generalize or clean out the air for this, or any CPR is, there's particle spraying. So just, yeah, what's the process of that especially?
Right, I mean.
And how you're protected, you know, and any fives in there if you needed, I mean, how, yeah, how does that look to protect everybody in the room there?
Right, right. Certainly hope to never need to use it, but you need a plan.
Yep.
So just some items to, again, not, not that anybody in this group could answer, so some thought processes that we need to get through in the next three weeks as we prep to
to get back in. I think those are really valid points, and I, I would expect on some level that our our health service has already answered that, or is at least prepared to answer that, presuming that we've been providing childcare for three months. And that we will continue to do so through the summer is, this isn't just a question of responding at the pool.
Right.
Yeah, this is. We want to have any of these events happen.
Right, in no way is this.
We don't want to put our staff at exposure. So I think that's a good question, Jeff, to coordinate between our building leads and our health staff.
So the good thing is, we're recording this so we can make sure that we answer these questions. One of the things that community ed facilities reservations was a little bit hesitant about, on about being short-staffed is we don't want to rush to open spaces where we don't have the answers to exactly what you're talking about, and we have talked with our with, with Mary Ellen, our district nurse, about visiting with her entire staff as to who may be interested in putting in summer hours to review our opening plans for all internal programs and make sure that the things are in place like you're talking about for, for first aid, and you know, Mary Ellen did the training for school-age care, which was switching over from Friday to Monday from emergency childcare to school-age care at a different site. So they needed to do the training, you know, immediately on that. So that, those are the kind of things that have to happen as we, we open summer things or open them back up. And so we're going to identify somebody within that that health services staff in the district to be the person to, to screen and review these things for us, because they're, they're on different hours in the summers. We can't just assume somebody's gonna do it. We're gonna identify somebody to do it.
Yeah, sounds like a good plan, and I think we all need to be aware that as, as we get different groups using different facilities, we're going to have stuff that comes up that we just, that nobody has thought of until they're actually in the space. So it's, it's not only gonna be the pre-plan, but it's going to be the, the response, you know, the quick response once, once we get folks into different areas, whether that be a gymnasium or the pool or whatever.
Any other questions or comments? This bit. You know, Deanna sent a note that said Cam is on his way. So if there are questions for Cam, it sounds like he's, he's close. But we can always come back to that. It's a work session, so.
Right.
Reconciling policies five, ten, and six, ten, talking about field trips and student travel. And so this is something that the policy committee has been talking about and brought up. And one of our issues with this is there are some drawbacks to if we collapse them, or if the district chooses not to be like the travel agent anymore. Mainly when we talk about equity, that right now, if someone wants to participate in a trip, if they have like a need for a wheelchair, if they need an interpreter, anything like that, that the district would make sure to cover that, so that any kiddo can go that wants to go. If we choose to step back from that role, then that's not something that a like a travel company would need to do. And so that is kind of a drawback, but then, of course, there are some added benefits to if we stopped essentially being the travel agent. And so the policy committee felt most comfortable if we took this to the whole board. We didn't think that this was one that we felt comfortable necessarily making the decision about this on our, on our own here, and we did want the board's feedback. So Stephanie, you're kind of the chair, I guess, of the policy committee. So would you like to go over it any more than that?
Sure, so to elaborate on our discussion specifically around equity, so if if we move away from you know, being a district or having the, the travel be sponsored by the district, then, then we're talking about liability concerns. So there's definitely a benefit for us pulling away from that. However, we want to ensure that there's equity. So we wanted to discuss it with everybody before we make any type of recommendation on how we want to do this. And we threw around a few ideas. There's a message, too, that Cam is here when we're ready. Do we want to get him on so he can get back to what he's, he's working on?
Let's put him on if we can get him there.
Absolutely.
Hey, Cam.
Hi, Lisa. So I'm just coming into this. I didn't hear anything up until this point, so.
Well, can't you read our minds? No? Alright, Scott, did you want to repeat the questions that you would ask?
Sure. So we, we have, we have some of the Hastings area swim team coaches, Coach Kim, Coach Chassie, and Coach Kate are with us here. So they're listening anxiously for you know, kind of what the plans are. So what we've heard so far is that the plan is, hey, July sixth is feasibly, you know, the first day that we would, that, that we would have accessibility to utilize the pool. So that being said, one of the questions was, will we, will, will, will the haste swim team, will they be able to coordinate with folks to get into the space earlier than that? If you look at their plan, there's, it's, it's, it's laid out in there, but there's, there's markings that need to go on the floor, you know, Xs and such that would go into the pool area to help guide the swimmers and keep them socially distanced, et cetera. So would they be able to get in prior to July sixth to do some of that work? What type of disinfectant sanitizer-type product should they be using outside of, you know, what, what they're going to provide, which is hand sanitizer, and that they're going to, you know, there's steps that the swimmers, as they come in, when they use it, et cetera. But there's still going to be the potential for, you know, the swimmers grabbing the railing, or the swimmers, you know, high-touch type things like the doorknobs, or, you know, whatever the case may be. So just some saying, I know that, that we have guidance for that within the schools. And then I think the, the last question was around, and this is probably a coordination with our health services folks, is around the emergency equipment. So the use, you know, if for some horrific reason, we would need to be administering CPR, there's new guidance around that, then there's, there's, there's items that would keep, keep the, the, the person performing CPR safe as well. So I think those were the three, the three big topics that we had here, so. And I don't expect you to have answers to those right off, right off of your head, so just, just items to take away. You know, we've got, we've got some time here, but.
Well, as, as far as the plan goes with disinfecting, that's, that's something that we've talked about a little bit as for school-related activities. You know, we've, we've kind of unofficially said we take care of all, all of the disinfecting that goes into that. As far as specific things that a group uses in their activities, Raiders Express is, for example, is using the weight room for part of their program. And we've, we've provided some disinfectant to them, and they'll, they know what, what equipment the kids have used, so we've worked out with them. There's a two-gallon sprayer, pump sprayer in between groups. The, one of the coaches will be there to spray those down, wipe them down, and get those ready for the next group. As far as any kind of equipment that's used by the group, I think that would be a reasonable expectation for that group to take care of, if I'm not off-base.
Yeah, it's, it's just an item where, okay, if they're using kickboards. Okay, fine, sanitize the kickboard, but what sanitizer should be used that isn't going to, you know, cause a problem with the water? You know, because some of it may get in the water. So, yeah, just items like that, that'll need to be, you know, thought through a little bit, I think.
Okay. I don't know off the top of my head, specific sanitizers that are good for to go directly in the water. Most sanitizers will flash off in a certain amount of time. So as long as the item is sanitized, and we know that it's dry, and it's not leaving a residue, that sanitizer will be fine. The biggest thing would be finding a sanitizer with an EPA nu- number that's listed to be shown to kill coronavirus. That's probably the biggest thing. And we don't want to use excessive amounts if that is gonna end up in the pool.
Sure. Yeah, and I don't anticipate that they'd be spraying it directly into the pool, but, you know, obviously you spray it on a kickboard, you leave the kickboard to dry. If it's not completely dry and it gets into the water again, you know, what happens? Or even on the pool deck and for, you know, okay, you know, where are you going to do this? And the pool deck is, is wet, or, you know, whatever the case may be, and a kid walks through it with their feet. Is that gonna be okay?
Well, in talking with Mary Ellen, transmission from surfaces is very, very low. From what she's educated us on, the biggest concern is respiratory droplets that transfer the disease to other people. In a pool environment, the chlorine in the water kills coronavirus. So is, if there's anything associated with the pool water, the pool water kills it. So that's, that's not a concern there. I think there would be scenarios you could think of where it could be transmitted from the pool deck from one person to another, but it would have to get from, you know, one person's feet to that same person's.
Sure, yep. And then other, other areas, you know, the, the guidance that the team provided, which I said is, I think it's based on guidance from USA Swimming that they have adapted, you know, to our specific pool and our specific building and everything else. And in that guidance, they say, hey, we're not, you know, come in your suit. Okay, swimmers, you're, you're coming in your suit, you're leaving in your suit. Okay, so that you're not going in the locker room to change or anything like that. But during a practice like this, there may be a requirement of using the restroom. So, okay, which restroom are you going to use? And how is that? How's that handled? How's that sanitized? How's that, you know, so just other considerations there, too.
When we talked with Raiders Express about their program. When we talked with Raiders Express about their program. We, we, they sent out a message to their parents and students that there, there wouldn't be a restroom. But we do have an emergency restroom set aside for them that'll be sanitized regularly throughout the day. The locker room, I think, I don't think we could manage any kind of traffic through the locker room. That's too much for our. People to handle. We do have three showers on the pool deck. They're meant to be used to shower before you go into the pool. That might be an option on the way out to shower quick. If we do have a bottle of disinfectant on the pool deck, that would be a place where they could shoot the button. And disinfect it every day.
Can I ask a more general question than the specifics of use of the pool? And I don't think. We have community add-on right now. So this is, this is a question process wise. That I think eventually community will have to answer, which is, so if we're going to approve facility usage and we're going to. Ask organizations to have a COVID response plan, much like all of our youth athletics do. My understanding is that at a statewide level, those don't have to be submitted. They have to be available and they have to be communicated to patrons. I, I would like to understand, again, I appreciate that I can't know this tonight. Are we going to be requiring submission of a plan? I don't necessarily want to be in the. Review process. I think we can be in the filing process. I think we can have a copy should a. A patron want to look at it, but I don't want anybody to believe that we're reviewing. A plan. Because that's a level of approval that I'm not sure we're qualified to give. But I, I don't know exactly where the gray line is between letting an organization use our facility and, and. Anticipating, expecting responsible behavior versus approval.
I can tell you that, this is Brian. I can tell you that I submitted a request for space and was asked for my plan before they would approve the permit. And that's our community. So we're doing something along those lines already.
Yeah, again, and I can appreciate that I'm not going to know the answer tonight because the right people aren't on the call. I would just. Maybe like a brief summary. Again, community ed is busy through the. You know, is busy, is crazy busy right now, but a brief email saying, you know, this is, this is the practice process that we're using. So again, at least I can understand that.
We can actually answer that tonight. In, in general, the HPS summer facilities and programs. Document that's attached there under 1A outlines that process. And then the actual reservation notice that's been sent out like Brian is describing. Carrie Gore, you know, fills that in in greater detail that. Anybody using the district facilities as an outside user must submit their plan to us. But it does not mean that we are approving their plan. We just want their plan because they're required to send it to us. On the internal side, I was just talking about that before, that we are going to have one of our health service staff contracted during the summer. To review and advise on our internal users' plans. So we will. In making sure that Raiders Express or whatever, their plan meets up with guidelines and, and they've been, you know, there's been. Back and forth if necessary to get that where we want it to be. But the state is not checking either, either intern or external users' plans. The burden is on them to, to have one and to have it be a good one. As far as the board goes, you want to make sure that those internal users not only have a plan, but it's a plan that. That somebody with, with some skill has looked at and has agreed that it matches what, what it needs to be. So that's where we're at right now and it's. It's right on the reservation notice, the, the answer to the question.
So this would be a question about liability. So let's say. An organization is renting our facility and they have a plan, but we have not necessarily approved their plan. If somehow there's contact tracing done and it turns out. That that event led to a whole bunch of people being infected. Since we did not review the plan, I mean, is that our liability there? How does that all? How would that work if we haven't reviewed it?
Well, there's no. Definitive answer to anything when it comes to legal issues, especially in, in this area. But in those documents that are all, you know, reviewed and have legal guidance on that community ad uses. It's, it's using the same basis of anything else that it's up to the, you know, the operator to operate safely, et cetera. If they slipped on the floor because of poor maintenance. You know, then, then it comes back to us. If it's transmission of COVID because they have bad practices. For the most part, they're going to be responsible. The, the only thing that we can do to try to prevent anything from. Coming back and potentially being tied to the school district is not. Not allow anybody to use the facilities other than internal users, which. I'm not even sure, you know, if we have the right to do that under our policies to. You know, unless it's for safety reasons that, that we can just say, we're not comfortable with the risk because our. Facilities are taxpayer facilities and they need to be made available.
I know in the case of, of the swim team that every. Every participant is, every participant, coach, official, everybody, so me. Were required to belong to USA Swimming and with that comes insurance and I believe that they have some COVID. Nineteen coverage there as well. So not every organization may have that, but I know in the case of the swim team, they do.
I can tell you that when they asked me, so I was doing this for our summer track program for the Y at the high school. Not only did they ask for the COVID plan, they also asked for the insurance binder. So there you go.
Okay, thanks. Right. So then do we have any other questions? We want to make sure to get out there. So we can be working on some answers.
I think most of the bases got asked. I think that we probably have to have a couple more answers on a, one or two more things. Like Lisa mentioned, but I think that as far as the. Pool process goes, as long as there's a plan in place and it's covered and. Medical staff has had a chance to take a look at it and they're in agreement and Cam can make the backup system work. We should be in business.
Well, my understanding is Cam's making a new system work. It's just replicating the backup system. So that's fabulous. And Cam, thank you, Dave. The only point that I had made earlier, Cam, was that, yes, we want to account for. Provision of CPR and emergency responses in the pool and certainly in other. Open facilities. So whatever Mary Ellen or the rest of our health staff. Feel like is, or, or no, is current practice and need to have available. We just, we need to assure that that's available in our other. In-house staffed areas. We don't want to over, we don't want to expose people that don't need to be exposed, even in the event of an emergency.
Alright, anything else? We'll go back then to the reconciling of the policies. If Stephanie wants to, oh, Becky.
I just ask a quick question. Can I see, can we see that what Mary Ellen and the staff have? Just so that we know about the emergency response to make sure everything. You know, we see that too, so that if something does occur, whatever, that we're aware of it. I personally like to see it too. What the plan is.
Becky, can I ask a clarifying question? Are you asking for? What training she's doing or the guidelines she's using?
They're using recommendations for emergency CPR, stuff like that, just what, what she has in place.
Okay, so I think. By early next week, we can, we can forward that up to, to all the board for you to look at. And then Mary Ellen is. On the agenda for the 24th to, she's required to do a wellness program update. So she's first up on the agenda, June 24th. So if you want to ask her specific questions about what you've seen. Then she'll be right there with you to answer those directly.
Thank you.
Cam, I got a feeling you're probably going to be dropping to get back to other matters. So just thank you for all your help and. And with, with not only those, the facilities, but with what you're dealing with today as well.
Thanks for the appreciation, Scott.
Not what you expected to do today.
A different day today. We got the truck off the field, so.
We like to keep you on your toes. Just wait to see what we come up with tomorrow.
Oh, boy.
Okay. So then we'll move on to policy five, 10 and 610. Cast, if you would like to continue to be on the, the call, you are welcome to. Otherwise, if you have any questions, please feel free to email the board with them and we will work on getting you answers. Alright, so Stephanie, you are up.
Okay, so to recap what we were going over, 510, which is the student travel policy and. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff and, and Kelsey and Brian. Is 510 the Hastings specific policy whereas 610 is the MSBA? Model policy regarding field trips?
So 510 is, is a Hastings unique policy. It actually is using a, a number that MSBA uses for something else. And it is specifically about student travel. And then 610 is the MSBA. Nomenclature for field trip policies and it's also Hastings field trip policy. So. One of the things that we were looking into was, could we take what the board and the administration thinks is valuable from 510? And include it, embed it into an updated policy 610. So that you don't have that discrepancy in that you have a policy that. One policy that applies to all and has your current district philosophy as far as travel.
Thank you, Jeff. So yeah, we, we were looking at combining 510 and 610. And I was just going over my notes before, before our meeting regarding this specifically. So. As, as the policy committee, we met, we discussed it, we thought we had a recommendation and then we didn't have a recommendation. Because we wanted to bring up this concern of equality. So what we could do is, you know, there's a few different courses of action. You know, we could keep the two policies separate and take on the liability of district sponsored trips. And, and that would definitely ensure that every student would have an equal opportunity to attend these trips. We could modify and combine the policies and then narrow down the district sponsored trips. And then the third course of action would be to take the district out of the sponsored trips and then allowing independent trips to continue. This, this doesn't necessarily ensure equal opportunity for all of our students. But then it also takes the liability out on us. So. That's what we discussed and we wanted to, to bring it to the board and, and see what input you have.
Just going to admit to, to losing track of exactly what the question at hand is. I'm just sorry, I, I read this and I unders- and I think I missed the point. Because when I, when I looked at it, I thought, oh, this is a recommendation to consider consolidating two policies. Love consolidation, love clarification. And I think the differentiation between a field trip and a extended trip could be handled inside of one policy. I like that idea. I'm not, I, I now I'm hearing this question about, that the question is really. Liability or, or who's the travel agent? And that I don't, I don't understand the. I just don't understand that.
I'm going to try and.
Am I getting confused between just a field trip where we say, okay, we're going to. Roll up on a bus and send all our kindergarteners to an apple orchard? Maybe I'm being too literal with the, with the idea of a travel agent. I'm sorry.
So I'm, I'm going to try to frame that really quick to, to get it pointed in that direction. There's two documents attached. In board book under this topic, one B, the very last one is a field trip planning flow chart. And in past practice have run into a lot of districts where the planning of field trips was not. Compliant with state statutes that. You know, students were being charged for things that they shouldn't have been charged for and they were being. Not having an equal opportunity. If they didn't go on a field trip, they were, had repercussions either in their. In their grading or their opportunity for social experiences. And so this, this flow chart. Was designed to, to help people in the early stages of planning a field trip. And that's like what you referred to, you know, going to the arboretum or whatever. So if you take and look at the, the document just above it, I, I tried to take that concept to. Put in the, in the form of a flow chart, what the committee was talking about with, you know, travel or essentially, you know, overnights. That. That the district kind of needs to decide within their strategic plan, and I know that's work upcoming for you. Is being a student in this district, are there certain? Trips, overnight trips, travel to, you know, far destinations, including out of country trips. That are so critical to the experience that the school board wants to be in the travel business. If they are not that critical, then, and, but they are great. Enrichment things for students, then can the policy? And, and the organizing flow chart, point people away from trying to organize the trips to the school district and let. The private tour operator, operators take the responsibility, not only the liability, the legal responsibility. You know, everything associated with the trip. And also to allow our staff, if they are the best candidates, to work on those trips, to participate and to be compensated. Or earn travel miles or whatever the other factors are. Because they are not working on school time. They are on personal days or they're on summertime or whatever the case may be. And so if you look at the flow chart, one thing is, the first question is, is the travel opportunity, opportunity aligned with your strategic plan? If it's not, then staff can participate on their own time. If it is aligned with the strategic plan, such as when you get to level five Spanish and you're in. The Hastings Public Schools, you get to go on a immersion trip to a Spanish speaking country. It's what we do here in Hastings and the board is going to support that. It's, you know, it's, it's defined as being that. Part of who we are. So then the board would approve it. Student fees can be requested because it's optional. However, you want to view it through an equity lens because a private tour company is not responsible for making sure that students of. Certain socioeconomic groups or certain English learners or. Any other background are participating at a lesser rate because they don't have access to the trip. So you can ask for a fee, but you're going to make sure that everybody who is eligible to go, such as in your example. If you are a Spanish five student, it means you've invested in all this trip all the way up to there. Now you get to go on this trip, whether you can afford it or not, and the district will pay for you if you can't. And if you do go and you need a sign language interpreter. Or you're somebody who has a, a handicapping condition and needs. Where travel fits in there because I can assure you that travel will happen anyway, even if it's not schoolwork sponsored. And you'll just be out of the travel business. So you're making a decision in your strategic plan. Do you want to be completely out of the travel business? Or do you want to pick only certain opportunities that meet? Are aligned with your strategic plan and then view them through an equity lens and make sure that it is that all inclusive experience. And then once you do sponsor a trip, you have to, on a required trip. You have to pay all expenses. You can't, you can't even charge any fees. So an optional trip that's board sponsored, you could request the fees, but have to cover costs that students couldn't support. And then if it was all expenses, or if it was a required trip, like you are in the marching band and we were performing at the Rose Bowl. You need to go. In that case, you can't even ask the students for. You know, paying part of their expenses, you just pay for them to go like they were on a football team going to the prep bowl. So maybe that flow chart helps frame it a little bit, maybe it doesn't, but that was the the thought behind that decision making.
Okay, well, the conversation about the flow charts was helpful. I I didn't feel like that was embedded in there. What's the, what's the driver to bringing this forward now? Again, it feels like, as Jeff indicated, it kind of aligns with with the broader strategic plan conversation. And again, I personally am hyper conscious about what our budgets look like for the upcoming years and I think that. Honestly, has to lead into this conversation maybe a little bit too. Is this something that can? Can stay flagged and and stay an element of those future conversations?
So one of the reasons that it's getting brought up is after COVID, when we needed to cancel trips, right? And who say we hadn't canceled that and since that was a district sponsored trip, if the kiddos had gone out to California. And they had gotten stuck there. Since it was a district sponsored trip, we would have had liability to cover. You know, any fees that are incurring due to COVID. And and all of that stuff. And so that's, that's really what's brought it up is the experience we just had with COVID in the spring. And it's kind of bringing this forward as we need to have this as a discussion over who is going to hold the liability. Or if something happens on a trip, you know, Jeff had brought up an example. If students go to Italy and all of their luggage is lost. If that's a school board sponsored trip, then we're the ones who are liable here to try to. Work out the luggage issue and to to get that figured out and to make sure that the students have what they need. If that was not a school board sponsored trip, if we had a travel company working on that. Then the travel company is now responsible for figuring out the issues with lost luggage. And so that's kind of a concrete example to figure it out, but it got brought up because of because of COVID and the the trips.
Okay, I can see that how that would be a driver, that makes sense. I've and I think it's definitely something we want to keep on our on our. I don't know, on our bulletin board, keep it pinned. I I feel like some of these conversations. Need to be a little bit more synchronous as we do the, hey, Brian, a little more synchronous. As we do the strategic plan and budget conversation, so. And I don't, I mean, I know we've got maybe a marching band trip, I think. But I'm not sure we're like honestly going to have extended trip. Questions at hand and and that we need to make this decision too quickly.
So to follow up on what Kelsey said and to answer the question specifically that you asked Lisa is why did? Five, ten come up in the first place? If five, ten came up, because you have a process. Where the board is approving extended travel and in the case of. The trips that were already approved, you know, this winter when I arrived, it was everything from California, Florida. Argentina, I believe. So those were all out there board approved, but five, ten says that the superintendent can determine if they're canceled. And it probably hasn't been a big issue, but under the under the pandemic situation and the the California trip for. Was, you know, the the first test of that was either people were going to lose a lot of money. Or not, depending on whether we made a a quick decision on canceling the trip. And so I met with Mike Johnson and I canceled it. We didn't have time to get the board together and process through it. And as we delayed these other trips, those are all trips that could have or could in the future have people losing money, being very upset, coming to the school board. And saying, I can't believe you let you you just lost me $2,000 and the board director saying. Well, I approved the trip, but I didn't cancel the trip. And so so it really was put out there for the board to think about, are you comfortable? Moving forward with the board approving the trips and then as five, ten says, the superintendent deciding to cancel the trip. And that may be exactly what you want, but it's an opportunity to look at that and see if you're comfortable with that. And then when you look at everything else in five, ten, then it became a part of just the overall policy process that we're at is. Why do we even have a misnumbered five, ten out there when we can roll it into six, ten? So that's how it got up, that's what triggered it and and now the policy committee is trying to. Make the best possible six, ten that they can and determine if they even need a five, ten.
Okay, as I'm looking at him while you're talking, Jeff, I do see that six, ten does say the school board may at any time decide to cancel a preapproved trip. I'm sure there's.
Field trips, yeah, but.
Trip thing also has extended trips in it. I mean, I. Having a five, ten, six, ten is good. I would love to not have those together. Or or I would not, I prefer to have them together and have clarity between. Like truly one day field trips and extended trips, anything that's overnight. I think that clarification would be good. And I could see where there would be lovely arguments between the two, but it does say school board cancels on that one, so. I I just think. We just keep this i- in front of us. As we try and figure figure out with the goal of making them a singular policy. I don't, I don't believe. Personally, I'm not ready to see it even as a first reading yet because I've just got to. Like understand the choices and and we don't. Align strategic plan, I don't know.
No, and we're not ready for that. Now, one option is that, I mean, before we have the strategic plan, we can even talk about. Do we want, because there's really three options here, right? We can say we will sponsor all of them. And we'll continue to have school board approved trips and they'll all be school board approved. We can choose to not do any of them or we can have a response where. We will sponsor trips that are within our strategic plan. And so these are really kind of the three different options. And so even without a strategic plan, we can choose to say. Once we develop our strategic plan, we will support and approve trips that align with the strategic plan that we are developing. It, does that make sense? Dave has a question.
Not so much question, I think that, you know, there's a need to address this, but until we have a better understanding of what. The travel options are really going to be in three months or six months. Or how this epidemic pandemic is going to come back to, you know, address the public. I think that, you know, one, we need a strategic plan that we need to work on that as a board and. Bring that forward and then, you know, look at the five, ten and and yes, I. I think that five, ten and six, ten could be tied together. I think that there's some options there, but I think we're a little early in the game. To be jumping that one and saying to proceed ahead, I would rather wait. At least a little bit and get some better understanding of what direction we're going to be forced to deal with. And then. Look at it that way. Thank you.
Becky.
Is there any trips coming up in the fall or winter that we know of? So.
Yeah, they're trying to reschedule the the California trip for the.
I think that this is good to talk about because the projections of the COVID and flu season is high. So I think that we really do need to talk about this. But can keep it on the back burner, but yes, definitely something to think about because if we do have to cancel. Or not let them reschedule. Something to keep in mind.
So just to recap, Becky, the the stimulus that brought this all up early in the pandemic was the choir trip to Los Angeles and San Diego. Which was canceled, completely canceled. Some people got refunds, some people did not. And there were some people who lost probably about $2,000 by not getting the refunds because they didn't have insurance. So that's why it becomes a. A high impact thing. The Spanish trip to Argentina that's board approved for June was postponed for one year. The marching band trip. That was board approved is being postponed till. A fall, it was supposed to be in July, it's being postponed to fall. And then there's a middle school trip to Eagle Bluff, which is, you know, overnight currently scheduled for November. And that was already board approved as well.
Brian.
The the pandemic piece notwithstanding, there was a, before any of the COVID nineteen even hit, there was a question that came. When we had a teacher that wanted to take the kids on a trip and wanted to get points for that trip and the question became whether. It's a school thing and the teachers should be compensated because they're in the process of getting all these things together and. It was more than just that is what I'm trying to indicate. It's not just about what happened with COVID nineteen all alone, that's a definitely. A liability thing they're looking at. If some parent gets a wild hair and says, I didn't get my money back, you sponsored this, you owe me. But it was going on even before that with, how do the teachers get compensated? They're taking time out to schedule this, was this really part of the curriculum? Was it something that's in in addition to the curriculum? So that's why this came up because some of these things, are they directly relatable back to the academic curriculum of a class? Or are they just a thing? And if they're just a thing. Should we be on the hook for it? An example would be the Greece and Italy trip, for example, that my son went on. So the Greece and Italy trip is during the summer, but teachers did take them out on that, they did on their own time, it was during the summer. But there was nothing to say that if something had gone wrong, it couldn't be tied back to the district. Because there's nothing to say it wasn't a school sponsored trip. So how did those types of things work and do we want to make sure that we are? Making sure at the end of the day that we've got all our ducks to roll around that type of thing, because on that particular trip seniors even went. So they technically had graduated high school and were going on this trip. So the district should certainly not be on the hook for kids that. Technically aren't even in the district anymore. You see, but I guess I'm trying to make my point, I don't know if I'm. Going around in circles, but hopefully I've gotten that across a little bit.
Yeah, and Brian, I was on the board and I think Scott might have been too when we went around about the. Compensation and what's. What was appropriate and correct within the policy and there was a clarification in twenty seventeen, November twenty seventeen around that. Maybe it's not as clear as it could be, but it was, we did do some clarification in response to that. Again, not opposed to doing this going forward. And I appreciate the conversation, I think it's a valuable conversation. Clearly, we all hold best interests of the. Students and staff at heart and. Clarification about alignment with curriculum and equitable access is is obviously high priority across the. Across the entirety of every member of the board as well.
Yep, I I agree. First, Brian, no, you weren't talking in circles, I was able to follow you, so I'm not sure if it's just late at night or what, but. I I think you bring up a good point with a trip like the Greece and Italy trip or like. You know, thi- things that happen outside of the school year, I think we can do a better job to be more explicit about that because. If something were to occur. The. Pension for lawsuits would say, who are we going to come after and. Ninety-nine percent of the time that is the person or the entity with the deepest pockets. And in that case, that would be the school district. So I I think it would be a advisable path to make it very, very clear. One thing I didn't see, I had put a sticky note on in in Board Book and I don't know if everybody sees that or just I see that, but. Okay. And that was, there was, there was not mentioned in the document that I saw and I think this is something we should add. For background checks for folks that are going on the trip that are not school district employees. For example, I know. With the Greece and Italy trip, there are people that go on that trip with the marching band trip. There are people that go on that trip, I was one of them. There was no background check, there was no anything and I think, I think that should become standard practice. So just my two cents as we start talking about these policies more in depth.
And I would say that's a great point because it can be added on there. You also, the Hastings doesn't have a nine hundred series and one of the things in the nine hundred series is defining. Volunteers, doesn't mean you don't screen volunteers, but there isn't a policy talking about how does somebody become a volunteer, so if they're going on a trip. And they're a volunteer and it's an overnight trip, you want a policy and there is a. First read prepared for June twenty fourth on the entire nine hundred series or at least the ones, the ones that we need. Immediately talking about how you screen the volunteers and that any overnight trip or any. Any event where somebody's a regular at a school or is overnight or in close proximity with students. They have that background check, so it's it's missing as far as policy, so it needs to go in the volunteer policy. And there could be a potential situation where somebody is not a volunteer and is going on a school sponsored trip such as they are a. Outside contracted sign language interpreter or something like that and then you want to have. That outlined in there too, so it's a good point for the field trip policy. And it will also be covered here on the twenty fourth in that volunteer. Policy in the nine hundred series.
Yeah, it might be a good idea to address those in tandem.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I I will point out, Scott, that right now, five, ten. I don't know what, I can't see the whole screen at one time, but. Whatever J is under on page two, we are requiring background checks for adults who are not school district employees who are participating on extended or international trips. And that's. Part of the 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 cost of the trip, it's not a cost to the chaperone, it's part of the cost of the trip, so we do have that. Currently, it's, it's just, you know, the middle to bottom of page two in a in a bullet. I think that might have been something we clarified too the last time we went round on this one.
Yeah, may, it may have been, there may be. There, for instance, and I only have experience with the Greece and Italy trip. There may be a differential there, okay, because the the Greece and Italy trip as a parent. You could go along. You you had to pay, so you were not a chaperone, you were not in charge of anyone. But yet you still traveled with, stayed at the same places with the students. I don't know, I don't know if that's covered by that or not, so.
Right now, it says background checks are required for adults, not school district employees who are participating on extended or international trips. So it doesn't say if the chaperone, it's just if you are an adult who is participating.
Right.
Now, we can get into a weird spot where like if an eighteen year old graduated senior. Is participating, are they technically an adult?
Right, so that's an international trip, but then like the case.
Or extended.
Okay.
And we did have some discussions surrounding this on the policy committee last year when we talked about background checks and at the time, the policy committee had said. You know, we were talking about volunteers in the schools and how frequently graduating seniors come back and they can volunteer and and do some work and things like that. And that we did not believe they should be exempt from background checks, that everyone should be getting a background check and just make that.
Yep.
I did, I did want to note one thing real quick. Steph, just to make sure we've got this noted the next time we talk, so I don't want to forget it. Is that one thing we're going to want to look at is we are talking about that summer piece and whether to include, don't include. Is the fact that if it's a summer trip. And we've got, you know, kids that are eighteen or over, they're actually graduated. If it indeed is going to be an overarching school thing, can they even go? You know, so we'll have a question, can they even go? Because technically they're not students anymore, can they go if school sponsored? And the other piece of that is for those kids that are underclassmen, if it's not school sponsored.
If it's not school sponsored, are they no longer in the offices of our rules and regulations? Does this mean these kids. Will not be under any school disciplinary actions if they do do something when they're on a trip?
I mean, I guess my thought would be is if it's not school sponsored, then we don't.
Right.
I think the same thing probably goes for background checks. If we say this is not a school sponsored trip. Then we wouldn't be requiring background checks, that that would be something that whoever is organizing this trip would be taken care of. Because as soon as we start to organize those pieces, then we start blurring that line. Are we sponsoring it or are we not sponsoring it?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's an interesting point, but something. Not saying that any of our students would ever do anything like this, but let's just hypothetically imagine a situation where. They are on a trip and there is alcohol consumed by a minor. As I understand it, if, if during the summer, let's say between the summer of a junior and senior year. A student is caught. Consuming alcohol. I believe that would still be a school disciplinary action when they come back to school in the fall.
I'm, I'm a hundred percent sure it's a Minnesota State High School League, so it has an effect on their academ- not on the academic side, but on the athletic side. And I know that we have as a district. Applied that to practice outside of the school day and at non-school activities that that has happened. I don't know that, what it looks like as a. To a, to a non-Minnesota State High School League participant.
Right. I don't know what it looks like for a non-athlete either. You're absolutely right. Lisa's spot on on the, on the Minnesota State thing. It doesn't matter where, when, how. But I don't know how that falls out with the actual district if we're not an athlete.
No, so Minnesota State High School League, anything that's referred. Applies because the students have signed on to their acknowledgement of Minnesota State High School League rules. There's no nexus to a non-school sponsored trip and, and, and school consequences. So no matter what it is, it's not connected back unless it is a school sponsored trip, which is another reason why. In your big picture, you want to ask yourself, is the district in the travel business or not?
Okay, any other questions or discussion on this? Otherwise, I mean, these are all things that I've taken a bunch of notes on and I see Stephanie writing away. They're furiously for us to talk about it our next policy committee meeting as we continue to kind of think through all of these things.
This is very helpful, gang. Thank you so much. It's really gonna, it's really gonna help us as a committee really get into this. So thank you for the time.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for bringing it forward. It was a good conversation.
All right, next up, preview of job classification updates.
So Jenna's going to walk you through this and I'm just going to set it up at her request. This takes you back to maybe March meeting where Bob Yorklin came in and he is the consultant that's hired. A very well-respected, does a lot of work around the area to come in and do our periodic review of job classifications. To make sure that people are in the right classifications, that it's not biased, that it's. It's, it's comparable to how we classify people and how we pay them to, to similar districts. And so if you're harking back to that conversation, this is the follow-up to that. And it's kind of the outcome of where some people will go into the next contract year with changes in their job classification. And as you can imagine, there's always winners and losers when you move the bar on anything. It's not just all winners. And so that's one of the reasons why Jen wanted to give you a heads up on this at the work session. So that when you are asked to approve them on the twenty-fourth at the regular meeting, you know what you're approving, you understand how it's connected back to the presentation it received. And also prepare you that any association or individual employee may contact you and say, wait a minute, I came out on the short end of this. And once again, to reframe it as we transition to Jen, is that, that's why you brought in an outside consultant. Who does not know the staff, who does not evaluate them, who does not hire them, just tells you. What our classification system should look like. To, to meet the criteria of, of, of a fair review. So kick it over to Jen.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with a little bit of review from that. March eleventh work session. Just can, oh. Okay, can you all see my screen? Yes, okay. So the positions on cycle for nineteen twenty, this is a list of all of the positions. This year or for nineteen twenty, we actually added some additional positions at board approval that were not on cycle. That we took a, a very close look at. So the next slide. Is the process that we did for the HESA group. So all of this has been completed now and just kind of as a reminder, I'm just going to quickly walk through it. That all of those employees completed a position analysis questionnaire. Their supervisor reviewed it and was able to provide feedback. The business office reviewed it and requested any necessary clarification from the employee and or the supervisor. All of those questionnaires were then sent to Bob Yorklin Consulting for creation of individual position descriptions. The completed position descriptions were sent to the employee and their supervisor for review and feedback. All of that feedback was then sent back to the consultant. The position descriptions were updated if necessary. And then all the positions were evaluated by the consultant based on that classification matrix system. There was a review done for any necessary adjustments to the classifications. And then all employees received their final position description and the results of the evaluations. So it was a very comprehensive process and very time intensive, but we made it through all of that. As far as the other groups. Those already had position descriptions. So basically the supervisors reviewed the current position description. For proposed updates or revisions. Employees in those positions were consulted during the process, so if they had any suggestions that was taken into account. The business office reviewed and requested any necessary clarification from employees and or supervisors. Those position descriptions were updated if necessary. Updates were reviewed by the consultant. And then there was a review for any necessary adjustments to the classifications. So from there, I'm gonna turn this piece over to Deanna and she's just gonna kind of walk you through what you'll see. On the June board agenda for action items. Maybe.
Sorry, I said really important stuff. We wanted to give you a preview of what the action items will look at, like at the June twenty-fourth meeting. There's really two things that are going to go on. In the first item, it will look very similar to this. You're going to approve the changes. So there were title changes to all the secretaries. We are no longer using the term secretary. We're using administrative support. Assistant one, two, and then just administrative assistant. And then they're dialed in a little more specifically related to what their actual position is. So for instance, administrative, administrative assistant to the print, the high school principal. We also made changes to the senior citizen coordinator. We're no longer using citizen. We're no longer using adults with the adults with disabilities coordinator. Those were just simple, just name changes. Then there were some eliminations of classifications and corresponding position descriptions. So there are some jobs that no longer are the same as they were when we did the survey. Those will be eliminated and then the new positions will be added. So that's kind of the three parts to the first action item that you'll see in January. And then you'll also approve all the updated position descriptions and they're going to be in the board book. There's probably close to forty of them. We don't expect you to read them all, but we wanted you to be able to see them. Cause they're all going to be posted on the web after the twenty-fourth board meeting. Then specifically, the, the changes that resulted in changes in. A position being eliminated and a new position being created. And then the person, the, the grade change, you'll see in a second action item, which will be to approve the changes in assignment. Those changes will take effect seven, one, so the new fiscal year. And these are the three individuals that were impacted where their job changed so significantly. That it's going to cause a change in title and in grade. And in two of the three cases, the positions are so specialized that they're going to be removed from the HESA contract. And placed on individual contracts. The reason that we put people on individual contracts is for just that reason. When it's a job that's so specialized that you just couldn't bump into it. Because our, the members of our HESA group, just like our custodial group or any of our collective bargaining agreements. Have seniority and should we ever have to go through any kind of reductions of, of workforce? Then most senior people would have the opportunity to bump into either a vacant place or a, a less senior person's job. In these particular cases, the jobs are so specialized that that wouldn't be possible. So the career center coordinator and the special services third-party billing specialists are both being moved to those types of individual contracts. The secretary one, moving to the administrative support assistant two, and that change in grade. Was just a reflection of increased job duties that didn't align any longer with the previous classification. We did have one final one that had to go back to the consultant. There was some questions that needed to be addressed by the individual and we felt like it needed to go back to the consultant before we could finalize it. But we're hopeful that we will have that to go along with all the rest of this next or on the twenty-fourth.
And then from there, at the July board meeting, you'll see another action item to approve the review cycle for twenty twenty-one. And from this table, you can see all the positions that are on schedule for twenty twenty-one. So it's a four-year cycle. But we'll start this process over right away then in July. So you'll see an action item basically just to approve the classification review cycle for pay equity compliance for twenty twenty-one. And then just to kind of review. What that process is going to look like in twenty twenty-one. So we've been kind of trying to dial this in. And I think getting through it this year on top of COVID taught us a few things. But you know, just to kind of outline that, so in July, you'll review the cycle. We'll do a district-wide email to all the employees notifying them of what positions are on cycle. In September, we're going to do an email out to district staff with the appeals process. And that's really for positions that are not on cycle. We had intended to do this kind of as a separate step, but as we worked through it this time, it really makes sense then just to kind of work them in. With all the other positions. So there'll be a deadline of September thirtieth for that. And then really July through November, we'll be meeting with supervisors to review and update position descriptions that are on cycle. And supervisors will obtain employee feedback. When we get to December, we'll submit any necessary updates to the consultant for review and possible reevaluation. January, we'll do this appeals meeting and we, you know, previously talked about that, but it's really myself, Deanna. The consultant, the employee and their supervisor. So that would just be an opportunity to get additional information. Of why they feel like their job is not correctly graded. In February, the pay equity committee meeting, just to review the recommendation prior to it going to the board. And then in March, there'd be board approval of any necessary updates. The updates would be posted to the website. And the employees would be notified. The other things we talked about, we're doing a salary survey every four years going forward, just to make sure that we're staying. On top of that, so we completed one in two thousand nineteen, so our next one will be in two thousand and twenty-three. And then we'll also review the positions that have been adjusted to market every other year. So again, we did that in two thousand nineteen and we'll do it again in two thousand and twenty-one. So for tonight, we're willing to take any questions you have. We'll do our best to answer them. Does anyone have any questions about this? I know March seems like forever ago, because we saw this in person, which also seems really weird.
Correct.
So, okay, Lisa, did you have something?
So I took Jeff's foreshadowing to heart and I was, I was waiting to hear the. The person that maybe came out or the position that came out on the short end and I.
Yes.
I didn't hear that.
And where that's coming is I think there are some employees that, let's say they were a secretary two right now. They were hopeful that through this process, they would be graded at a secretary three, that they would go up. So Deanna and I have been fielding those emails since we sent this out.
So the anticipation wasn't, it, it isn't that somebody's position was reevaluated and graded down. But that there were people who felt like I have taken on additional responsibilities and my, my scope of work should have expanded. Should have expanded sufficiently to change my grade.
Right. And one thing that the consultant is always quick to point out even to Jen and I when he calls back for questions is that. The volume of work is a staffing issue. It's not a grading issue. So if someone is being overworked, then we count on the supervisors to know that, okay, we need more staff. Or we need to divide the work up to a greater degree. And I think that's sometimes where people get confused. Cause I think a lot of our staff work really, really hard and then they feel like, well, no one's paying attention or, you know, I'm doing a lot. The other thing that Jen and I both talked a lot, because we have, we've gotten emails and we've been trying to, you know, respond as quickly as we can. Understanding that, you know, everyone is valuable and this isn't a reflection on their value to the district. And, you know, I try to say that, Jen tries to say that, but you know, the unfortunate part about. Working for the public is we're kind of pigeonholed. Like a lot of times, we can't necessarily give people raises just because we think they do a great job. Even though they do a great job. So I think that's where like Jeff was saying. Maybe some of the frustration is like, I just want to be recognized more and, you know. We can try to work on recognizing our staff better, but it's probably not going to come through this classification piece.
Thank you. That, that was very helpful.
Yeah, and I think that's in, something important for us to talk about. I do also appreciate the process that this goes through. And how staff and their supervisors have two different times that they're looking at these descriptions and working on it. Before it gets sent to an outside consultant. And I do think that that bit of the process is really important.
I think one problem with the whole grading thing is that it isn't a reflection on how valuable you are to us. Like just being graded higher doesn't mean that you're more or less valuable. And that's hard for people to understand. And I think that's just, that's just the nature of trying to put a number on a job. That it's just feels that way, even though that's not how we intend for it to feel.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments about this? Okay. Then we will move on and next is the status update on the board approved TDE plan and principal evaluation plans.
All right, so this one emerged from the series of executive orders that, that we got. And it ended up highlighting, I guess, a bigger mystery that needs to be resolved, not only as part of your strategic plan. But also because you are going into administrative negotiations. It's actually the perfect window to resolve the, the second of the two items here. So I'm gonna highlight why these documents are put out here for your information. Because a lot of work goes into preparing that agenda for those regular board meetings. And we are kind of forced to try to stop the hands of time because things are moving right up until we post that. And then things keep moving after that and we're trying to give you that snapshot. And something that you may not have noticed in May's meeting. And you may not notice if it moves around in June's meeting, but I want to point it out anyway, in case you notice it's moving. But I just don't like to have those moving pieces, especially without an explanation. So in the May meeting, we were supposed to approve. So in the May meeting, we were supposed to approve a memo memorandum of understanding between the district. And the teachers association, the, the local admin regarding the fact that. Because we were forced into distance learning and under one of the executive orders. We were told that we needed to stop doing teacher evaluations. And how that would, and, and the association and the district have to come to an agreement of what that means. Because every district has their own agreement on teacher development and evaluation. So the good news is we were very strict with our human resources calendar. And all of our principals got their probationary teacher evaluations done. So when you had to take actions on reductions or moving people forward. The distance learning did not impact that at all. However, principals were also told and some of the principals had very large workloads as far as evaluations this year. They tend to come in, in waves like that. We told them, you don't have to focus on getting all your continuing contract teachers evaluation is done. Because the priority is the probationary ones. If you have to go later into the year with the continuing contract teachers, that's okay. But we're on a tight deadline for the probationary teachers. So that worked out. Of course, we went into distance learning and some of the principals who were planning on March, April and even May. Getting those continuing contract teacher evaluations done could not do that. So I had put on the May agenda, uh, under guidance from MDE that we needed this. We needed to get an MOU. They didn't tell you what to put in the MOU because it depends on your agreement. So I had it on there and then the local ed association admin, um, chapter was saying. Hang on a minute, what are we making a change to? What document are we making a change to? And that's where things, the mystery kind of grew was in 2014. Every district in the state had to have their local teachers association and the district come up with. The teacher and development evaluation plan and it had to meet state, general state criteria, but it could be specialized. So when they started talking about whether we agree or don't agree to an MOU. It had to be pulled because nobody could find the original agreement from 2014. And I obviously was not here, so we set various people in the district out to look for it. We didn't use board books, so we couldn't do a search. I know Deanna spent time actually going through paper board documents. And the teachers association searched all their files. Jen Reichel was looking for things and ultimately they never did find the agreement. They found what you see is the first document, which is. Just a summary, but not the details of the plan. And then there is a PowerPoint that was presented at a board meeting. Describing how Hastings would do their plan. And in my time here, I've watched them trying to do that plan. So I know that the only thing that was really getting in the way of doing the plan this year was the fact that we had to shut down into distance learning. So there is a document attached there, which is. Kind of education Minnesota's recommended MOU. And so I've asked everybody involved that I just described to either be prepared to. Support the MOU in June, so we can wrap this up before the fiscal year ends with an agreement of how. How things stopped and, and what the status is of those teachers as far as their evaluations. Is it extrapolated out and they're done for the year? Do they have to recycle through next year? That's, that's the hang up. So that MOU is ready. It got pulled from last May because nobody was ready to agree to it. Now we know that we don't have. The full document, original document or evidence that the board ever approved it. We really have two choices is, and I told them, we need to decide by the 19th so we can put it on the June agenda. Either we're going to. Put out there a new agreement on what TD and E is agreed upon between the two parties. And have the board approve it because somehow that process got skipped in 2014. Or people have lost all the evidence of it. Or they can agree what the original plan was and we can just approve the MOU that's attached there. So there's not really anything that the board needs to do other than follow the ping pong match that's going back and forth on how we get this done. And it may seem like a trivial thing, but the whole evaluation system has to be. Based on something that the parties agree to. It's kind of like the constitution, you know, maybe we all think that the constitution is a nice thing, but nobody can find the original copy of the constitution. So we're not really sure exactly what each article said. So either we need to find the agreement, agree that there's a new agreement or. Or disagree to this MOU at the June meeting. And then just finally to explain the last two documents, it's something that was apparent when I first got here is that. The, and 2015, so one year after the statute requiring the teachers to have a TD and E plan. Legislature decided that principals also have to have and agree to an evaluation plan. I know that principals have not been evaluated every year. That there isn't a plan that's been board approved or has been approved by the principal association. And evaluations did not take place this year. So as you go into negotiations, maybe that's the perfect time to agree on a plan for principals. There are parameters. Essential elements that need to be in the plan, but the district doesn't have to use a specific, just like the teacher plan. It doesn't have to use a state plan. It can revert to a state plan or it can customize it as long as it stays in those parameters. So principals have told me they don't have any document that represents where this ever started. And I'm just sharing with you the statute and the questions about that a board member or anybody might have about principal evaluation. So maybe this is the perfect time to get that in place so that you don't run into an issue with. A, a challenge over a principal's evaluation down the road. And more importantly, the whole point between TDE and between the principal evaluations is not. Giving them thumbs up or thumbs down on the job that they're doing. It's because that will happen anyway. The evaluation process is all about reflection and growth as a professional. And it doesn't happen without those things in place. So it's kind of a mystery where those documents are or how far they got. But it's a great opportunity to get both of those pulled back into shape. And so I'm hoping that you will have an MOU for the teachers to approve in June. And then I'm just encouraging you as a board to consider this, this principal evaluation component. Either inside or outside of administrator negotiations as you go forward.
Thank you. So I'm a bit concerned, 2014 is not that long ago. As for not having. This plan that we can find. You know, we're not talking about the eighties before there were computers or anything like that. And so I'm just. I'm also wondering from here going forward, how do we make sure that we're not losing important things like this? Do we need to relook at how things are being organized, how they're being put digitally? I know we have board book now for some of this, but just kind of an overall conversation. How do we address this? I think the point about bringing this up with the principal evaluation plan, especially if. You know, we're right in the middle of principal negotiations. I think that's a great point and it's something we can talk about as a negotiations committee.
So just, just to respond on, on your first point, Kelsey, obviously board book is a great asset because you can search for anything. And you can search through paper too, but it's, it's tough to, to do that. So those two documents are the things that the teachers association, the two that are posted there, the joint agreement and PowerPoint. Were things that the teachers association found. And, but they couldn't find the actual board approval. So they could agree before the 19th that they're going to go back and, and, and just give you this agreement. And now you can go back and yeah, six years later, but you can go back and approve it. So now it's a part of the record. Problem with the MOU is that, you know, you're, you're modifying something that never, potentially never existed. And I don't know where the trail ended because that PowerPoint suggests that it was presented to the board. And the agreement suggests that it was worked on. There's just no record of the board approving it and doesn't mean they did. There's just no record. So, so hopefully in June it gets cleaned up one way or another. I just felt I had to explain it because otherwise we're in the middle of a business meeting and people are saying, you know, what in the heck? It seemed like a good opportunity to explain it because I couldn't figure out. Why those documents weren't just there and this is the story. So I guess we gotta start from where we're at.
Okay, so help me understand. Okay, admittedly, not fabulous. All right, we'll just acknowledge it's not fabulous. How do we get from today to the 24th? Who, who's working on this? What's the process to decide how, how it looks to us at the board meeting?
So there was a group, so Jen Reichel and the teachers association co-presence. And one of their negotiators were met to talk about this as it was discovered. And to look for, to, to, to follow the trail and find what they could, which is the, the three things that we have in front of you. So they planned another meeting yesterday, but there was confusion on whether that meeting was with calendars. So not everybody had it on their calendar. And I had sent out maybe two weeks ago notification that they had to come up with something on the 19th. Either, either they agreed to the MOU. And provide the document that was approved by the board or we need to go back. We could skip the MOU and just have the board approve the whole TDE plan. So at a minimum. Either we found the TD plan or they come up with a new agreement on what the TD plan is. The good news is, is there's a lot of evidence that they've been following a plan and that they agreed on. They just don't have evidence of it being board approved, so they can't modify it. So there, that meeting for the 19th needs to be rescheduled and I reinforced. But then, or not, actually not the 19th from, from yesterday. That didn't happen. I, I just reinforced the 19th is the date that you've been given to provide something for the board to approve. Either an MOU or the full agreement because. Otherwise we're not, we're not in compliance with what we're supposed to do. I don't know that anybody's going to check up on us, just like they didn't check up on us in 2014. But it's, it's not a good practice and this is once again. Just time to clean it up, that's all. And if it weren't for the pandemic, you'd be going into another year without this cleaned up. So silver lining is everywhere, I guess.
All right, thanks. Look at the silver lining.
Yeah, it's a small one, but. Got to have something.
Okay, so that sounds good.
You guys, it was approved. We can find the approval in, in the September of 2014. We just don't know what the plan looked like. So it was approved, but the teachers don't have the document.
Why wouldn't we as a district have a copy of the document?
It was never something that we created. It was created by the TD and E group.
Right, but if, if we're approving something, shouldn't we have a copy of it?
Yeah, I, I can't answer that. I just know that it was approved back on the September 24th, 2014 board meeting. And there was no, there was no document that was provided with it. So the, the best that Jen Reichel and I could piece together was that they presented it that night. That, that PowerPoint that you've seen, it presented it with that PowerPoint, but they didn't have it actually in a document form. And that's just Jen and I trying to kind of piece together from the board minutes. We could find that it was approved, but we couldn't find what that document looked like. And the best we could come up with was the PowerPoint.
Right, and my questions were not meant to be. Like frustrated at, at you or.
They can't find it and it's not something we had, like it was before Jen's time. So, you know, she's been trying to piece it together and we, it, we've asked for it before. And have not been able to get a hard copy of it.
So the good news is if by the 19th. The district and, and admin Hastings can agree on. Whatever they want you to approve, you can approve it. That's the only requirement is that they agree. And that it meets the state criteria, which no doubt it does because they've been operating for years under a plan that meets the criteria. They just got to agree on what's going down as the plan.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so next up, not quite last on our list because we did also want to close. For some discussions surrounding admin negotiations. But talking about district equity discussion, I know we have also received some emails about this. That people are wondering what the district is doing regarding equity. And I know this is something that we have brought up a lot and has, I mean, we even brought it up tonight in talking about field trips. But kind of. Where do we want to go? What role do we want the district and the board to have in some of these? These things.
Well, Kelsey, first of all, I want to say thank you for the comprehensive reply that you sent back to that email. I don't know to, from our. Community member. One thing I would like us to do because it is a look to, to put in the forefront. The forefront maybe being the front of our website. Highlight the actions that we're taking and then. I feel like we've made a commitment by just doing the. Proclamation back in 2018. But clearly this has to just be right at the forefront of our strategic plan. And we have to do the work every day at every conversation and every meeting. And that, that. We just have to remember that and I want to thank the policy committee for, for demonstrating that with bringing it forward. Just on a, on a regular issue that always has to be in the forefront. And I'd like us to, to demonstrate and make it more transparent, more available to the community that this work is being done because people are looking for it more now.
Yeah, I think that's part of it is communication. I think there are a lot of people, like the community member we had responded to. Who this is very important to them and they were not aware that this was something that the district had already been working on. That we had already sent a large group of employees to go through equity training and that we are actively involved in. Kind of the community work on this. And so I think some of this comes down to, like you said, communication. Making sure that it's clear that we are participating in this. Is there anything else? I know. Lisa?
I was searching for unmute button. Hey, this is marginally related, but it was not marginally, it's actually related. So I was reading the MSBA journal. I'm pretty sure it was just the last one. And it had a pretty strong equity lens and it talked about some districts that had been. Given awards with regard to their equity. And one piece that really jumped out to me was at Roseville area schools. Where at the, I believe it was the high school level. There had been some curriculum developments around particularly how history was taught. And that there was a lens, there was like a lens on that. I would love to see us. At the very least, make sure that those conversations, and I suspect they are because we, you know, we have an equity coordinator. But I would hope that conversations around embedding equity in curriculum. So that students see themselves in our curriculum and that, that all students and staff. Are aware of the range of historical experiences that different communities have in this, in this country. And so I, I, that just was one that really jumped out at me and I think that might've come out in April or May, but early May. But I thought that was really an interesting way to approach equity. So I know Jen's not in this meeting, but I'd like to bring that forward.
No, I do think, but I personally think that that's important. And talking about, you know, at what age do we start talking about this? And I, I mean, I would say having kiddos reflected in curriculum. I mean, from when they start in our school system is incredibly important. So not just, you know, working only at the high school level or starting middle school and up, but working district. you know, working only at the high school level or starting middle school and up, but working district wide on making sure that students are represented in our curriculum and that we're working to teach those perspectives.
Absolutely. I absolutely agree with you. It was just the thing that jumped out at me. If anybody wants to dig back into that last MSBA journal was the specific curriculum changes that were occurring at Roseville area high school and that they would have been driven out and in response to student, student feedback. And I just thought that was that 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 loop and then the outcome were both really powerful.
Any other comments? No, I am gonna call you out, Brian, just because you had mentioned something to me a couple of days ago. So I just wanted to see if you had any comments you wanted to bring up tonight at the meeting or?
Well, I think that, um, I wasn't gonna bring it up because Jen's not here, but then again, at some point Jen will be brought in. Um, when we can, one of the things that we as a district lack is any foundational classes, um, curriculum pieces that specifically address the issues around equity and the treatment of folks. And actually, a friend of mine's assistant principal put it best, what we really need to do is make sure within our curriculum, we are addressing equitable treatment of all and how we as a people become better as early, young as humanly possible. There's been some questions in the past about what age should that start? Well, if you consider the fact that Ruby Bridges desegregated an elementary school in nineteen fifty-four, consider how old that young lady was. She was a little girl, a very little girl. So what's wrong with starting in kindergarten? And the reason I bring that up is because it's just like, this is another subject for another day. It's the same reason I think that if you're gonna learn a language, you need to start learning it younger because the further you go with not learning certain things, the further away you get from ever learning them, um, ultimately. So I think we need to start working toward in that strategic plan that we all talk about. It's making sure that we do have issues around equitable treatment of all built in from day one for children. Because even if it's not being necessarily taught in their home or even supported in their home, I have found and I've seen it data proving that children still seem to find a way to push through oftentimes if they start very young, because even as a four-year-old, five-year-old, six-year-old, you begin to look at things through a different lens if it's being brought to you in your classroom as well.
Thank you. And so I do think, um, as we've continued to bring this as an ongoing discussion, I mean, you know, when we talk about, um, superintendent search, the community surveys from that, I mean, it's clear that this is a priority for the board and that this is a priority for the community. And so making sure that we continue this work and really keep this equity lens going, I think is incredibly important and these discussions are incredibly important. And I know they can be hard and I know not everyone will agree with it. And I I still think they're important and I still think we need to have them. So. Okay. Any other comments on on this piece? Any thoughts? And where to go? Just? Yeah. No? All right, so then at this point, um, we can close the meeting briefly to talk about admin negotiations and just so that the community is aware, this is really just to get some uh, feedback for the negotiations team, um, so that we kind of know going forward in the negotiations, what the board is looking for. So I'm not sure how we do this on Zoom. I guess we just stop recording. Do people need to sign off? Thoughts? Since we have not had to do this before.
Okay, since it's a closed session, um, then I think we would just stop recording and stop streaming it at this point. Cause that is when, i- is that accurate, Jeff?
No, I was not aware that you were gonna close this session tonight because you have to post in advance that you're gonna close the session, then you have to record the session. And then the recording has to be available to the public after the negotiations are over. So, and I don't know who all I had a chance to talk to about this. I think I talked to Kelsey about this. In the first meeting with the with the administrator group, the conversation was, um, very much oriented towards an interest-based negotiating. And and that's great and I support that. I've had a lot of success with that. When you close the session, which you are, which the board is entitled to do, when you close the session, you're actually moving away from that interest base and you're going back to the, um, you know, tug-of-war type model because they're wondering what you're talking about in your closed session. So if you're really interested in moving towards interest-based, I would, I would proceed with that and have your conversation and don't talk about anything that you know, you don't want made public, but talk about your, your, your game plan and get organized here in this work session. If you truly want to close a, uh, a board meeting for negotiation strategy, which is, which is legal, you would want to post for an upcoming meeting such as the twenty-fourth that it is an agenda item, so the public is aware of it, that you are going to close the meeting. And then you would vote during the meeting, which you can't vote during a work session. You have to vote during the meeting to close the meeting for a negotiation. And then you'd open the meeting back up and you would audio record the entire conversation you had while you're gone. I mean, while you were in the closed session. And then once again, that is kept private until the negotiation cycle is done, then anybody can request that audio recording. So if you close now, you, it requires a board vote and you can't vote during a work session. So I would advise you not to do that and to plan for your twenty-fourth. If it's something you do want to talk about it now, but if it's something you want to do is actually close the session, the session for negotiation strategy to prepare so that we can put out the notice that that you were planning on doing that on the twenty-fourth.
All right, so then as I see it, we have two options. We can talk about it tonight, just outwardly, um, kind of like Jeff had mentioned and keep this more open. Um, or we can close the session on, uh, the twenty-fourth and have this discussion around strategy in private. So Scott, as the kind of lead with the negotiations, how would you feel?
I think there's value to having a closed session. What I'm looking for on behalf of the negotiation team is guidelines. You know, goalpost guidelines from this overall board. What I don't want to do is as a negotiation team, work with the administrators and come back with a recommendation that is not in line with what all seven of us ha- have in mind. So with that, there may be, and I'm not saying that this would be part of the closed session, but it could be part of the closed session to come in there with parameters that say, well, you know, we would like to fall somewhere between X percent and X percent. If we're not in a closed session, then o- of what value is that? And we probably would never have that discussion.
All right.
So I think, uh, in my opinion, we can keep to the agreed upon principles that we talked about at the first meeting and yet still be able to have a closed session discussion with the board. That's, that's my opinion.
Right, and where does everyone else fall with that? Does that sound good? To, we can just get head nods.
I can throw a Scott.
Okay.
Does the, does the Jen, June, good heavens, June twenty-fourth, um, meet your negotiations timeline?
Yeah.
I think so. I think they were directionally looking at
At July.
At like July thirteen, the week of July thirteen, which I don't think we have a official date. But what part of what we agreed to in that session was that neither we think it would be helpful to have the information that we are going to be presenting or that we're going to be talking about in the other party's hands seventy-two hours prior to the meeting, minimum seventy-two hours before the meeting. And the thought process around that wa- process around that was if I don't know what you're going to propose, or I don't know what you're going to say, or I haven't had time to think about what you're going to say, it leads to a lot more reactionary discussion than, okay, I'm going to read this. I'm going to digest it. I'm gonna let it sit in the brine for a little bit and ferment. And then I'm going to come back with a more thoughtful response. You know, a- at the meeting. So that's, that's one of the things. So if you back up from that, you know, we're still
Yep.
in, in July. So we're, we're fine from that perspective.
So we will plan then to close the meeting on the twenty-fourth in order to talk about, um, the board parameters for this.
And so, uh, like I said, the, you know, interest-based, you would try to have that conversation hour in a format where everybody could hear that ahead of time. A lot of districts do still close uh, sessions for negotiation strategy. So you wouldn't be, um, you know, an outlier if you, if you did that. The, the point I wanted to make is so that nobody challenges you for illegally doing an open meeting that you take the time to set up the notice and and to do that. And then that all the board members, because we do have new board members, that they understand that when you're talking about closed session, it's not the old, you know, old-fashioned smoke-filled room where what you say stays there. It's going to, it can be heard by people later. And if you know that, it keeps you from being, you know, too relaxed in your comments. What Scott is talking about, talking about parameters, whatever, that may be advantageous to you talking about now and going into negotiations. But you would not be embarrassed or upset anybody when they heard your parameters after it was done. So if everybody understands what that means, instead of like what maybe it used to mean, then then you'll be in fine shape and we have plenty of time to get that set up for you and to prepare to record the meeting. And and store and store that recording for, um, till it's no longer needed.
Okay, then we will, um, plan to get that notice out so that everyone knows going into that meeting, we will have a vote to close. Okay, do we have anything else to get brought up tonight at the work session? Didn't Brian?
I just wanted to real quick, um, let a number of you guys know how much I appreciate it. Uh, some of you guys reached out over the last couple of weeks to me just to touch base with everything going on. I just want to let you know how greatly I appreciate it and appreciate some of the reaching out I got from some other community members as well. Just greatly appreciated to to have that going on and to been able to, um, and it's still going on, be able to have been asked about having some very meaningful conversations, um, with folks. So I just wanted to voice my appreciation for that.
Awesome.
Okay, anything else to cover tonight? Not seeing anything.
Yeah, just, just, just one thing. And this is, this is, uh, maybe just a precursor to what we're, what we're going to talk about around e- admin negotiations. So I guess I'm, I'm gonna share some thoughts that are going through my head just at a high level. And maybe this will, you know, again, be some things you can think about as well. So as I, as I come into the negotiations and and this would be the same whether it was admin or teacher or whoever, but as I come into the negotiations right now, I'm kind of viewing it as a here's what I know and here's what I don't know. And you know, i- it maybe, it maybe could even be classified as here's what I know and here's what I'm nervous about. Okay, so what I know is w- we know what our budget looks like for next year. We know that we are already over, over budget. Um, we know the challenges that our administrators have led us through over the last, you know, the, the latter portion of the school year. It, it was incredible. It was a amazing effort. We know what our percentage from the state of Minnesota is going to be, you know, for the coming school year. And then I get into some of the unknowns, which is I don't know, you know, we're going to sign a multi-year contract and I don't know what the state of Minnesota is going to do. You know, and I worry about there being a one-point-five-billion-dollar surplus forecast that three months later turns into a nearly two-point-five-billion-dollar deficit. I worry about what that looks like for school funding. Uh, I worry about what we're going to do with our bu- you know, the unknowns around our budget and perhaps the unknowns that we'll have around COVID nineteen and the, the fall. You know, what does this look like? We, we know we have a forecast of what our students are going to, you know, what our student count is going to be, and I believe it's down. But what does this look like from? Are, are we going to have families that choose not to send their children back to a pub- a, a school setting? I, I don't know that. I've heard that that's a concern, but I don't know if that's true or not. So just some thoughts, you know, a- as we, as we, you know, come into this because the administrative negotiations is this year and then next year, probably in early spring before the legislature has a chance to finalize their numbers, will begin negotiating with the teachers as well. And obviously they're our largest group. But like we tried to do with all of our groups, you know, to, to have the equity between, between the, the different groups is very, very important. So those are just some thoughts running through my head. So do with them as you will.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, and I think that's a good point. And even though we know the percentage that the state approved for next year, we're not sure how they're going to determine, um, you know, student count, um, or say if we, if we do a distance learning model, like you said, how many students won't be getting counted? Or if we're not doing distance learning, and I think the reality is there will be a number of students who do not come back to school in the fall if we are in person. Um, I mean, if they have a family member who is high risk, who
Right.
is immunocompromised and they can't risk sending a kiddo to a, a busy school. So I think that is a very large unknown right now. And frankly, with how quickly things are changing, I don't think we're even going to know what's happening until right before school starts or when school starts.
Right. Yeah, there, there's just so many more parameters to this than
Right.
tha- then just, h- hey, how are things going with our administrators? I mean, they were, they, they were awesome. All of our staff were awesome. I mean, to pivot to a full distance learning curriculum in the timeframe that we had was short of miraculous, but certainly heroic.
Yeah. And so as I understand, we are creating three potential plans for the fall. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah, I put in, um, that look ahead is in the summary that was sent out late this afternoon too. Um, so I'll just summarize what's on there is the state came out last week and said they will make their announcement about what schools can do for opening on July twenty-seventh, which is way late. So what they're giving us now is they're telling us that expect to use all three options, which is regular school, full-time distance learning and a hybrid model. You know, every other day or you're allowed to have half the kids or spread them out or whatever it is, something in between that, that you should honestly expect to use all three of them during the year. They're only gonna tell you on July twenty-seventh how you can start the year. For us, that's end of August. And, um, they may change it after they announce it on July twenty-seventh based on data that they have, you know, with, with the pandemic. So um, the good news is everybody is, we're staffed and everybody's proceeding with come back to school as, as normal. We know how to do that. Distance learning, we didn't know how to do it, but we learned a whole lot, so we can refine that. And the time spent from now till We know how to do that. Distance learning, we didn't know how to do it, but we learned a whole lot, so we can refine that, and the time spent from now till. You know, back-to-school letters in August is refining what the in-between would look like, and everybody's starting from scratch on that. Everybody's starting from scratch, and there's not a school that does that. So that's where the bulk of the work should go between now and, and like I said, back-to-school letters.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Anything else to bring up tonight? Doesn't look like it, so I guess with that, we will end our meeting. And it looks like the weather's beautiful this week, so that's a plus. And everyone have a good rest of your week and um. We will.
Want to remind that I will not be there on the twenty-fourth. Just, if I'm needed, then just let me know.
Happy early birthday.
Thanks, otherwise I'll see you guys in July.
Can't believe you're twenty-seven already. Oh, how the time flies.
I've turned, I've turned twenty-one every year for a lot of years now.
I like that.
There's not much more to really look forward to, so.
I'll settle for forty.
I don't know, I act, I act like I'm twenty-two sometimes, but uh.
That's a makes you fun, though.
Yeah, exactly. Alright, guys.
Have a good one, guys.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Be well, everyone.